Good evening, brothers and sisters. Welcome to the most beautiful parish in Bermuda, Hamilton. Before we go any further, can I ask Brother Arthur Hudson to lead us in prayer?
Our Lord and our Father, we give you thanks that we are together in this manner here this evening. We give you thanks for Bermuda. We give you thanks for grounding us such a beautiful island. Let me just ask you now, Lord, that the beautiful people that you have given us, that they will be able to elaborate on what is good governance, what is appropriate matters of following after thee in terms of the national interest and the greater community. We just ask that you will be with each and every one of us here this evening for your glory and for your greater good. We ask in Jesus' name and for his sake. Amen.
Thank you, Brother Hudson. Firstly, let me acknowledge the former premier, Paula Cox is here tonight, and others who have come from other parishes, other than this great parish. We've got two dynamic presenters tonight. The first would be Lawrence Scott, MP from Warwick. You probably know that he is the son of our former premier, Alex Scott. And this guy, he's got the qualification, he's well-equipped to address the issue at hand. His studies is in aviation. Also, he works in that field. So, in addition to Brother Scott, you know, we have two airplane pilots in Parliament, and they both stand for the PLP as our leader, the honorable three. Who's the other one? Mark Bean. David, another one. I didn't know he was a pilot, but David Burke and Lawrence Scott. So, it's three pilots. So, you see, the part is headed by pilots, so we're okay. We're okay. I'm so happy about that. So, we've got a good record. Now, we have to be out here by 8:30, so when the time comes for questioning, let's stick to the issue at hand, and these guys are well-equipped to answer. Now, because we're having this meeting on the airport, don't think that we forgot about the PRCs getting status. Don't think we forgot about the Public Butters Reform Act. We haven't forgotten none of these things. This is just an issue that's come before us, and it's very pressing, and there seems to be certain violations of even the UK's, their standard of these situations, this size, about an airport. But that will be explained to you further. So, the first one I will call be Lawrence Scott.
Good evening, everyone. Just starting off today, just would like to thank everybody for coming out. And just wanted to, what I'm going to do is just elaborate on the more technical side or the aviation-related side of the new airport development. I'm going to show you basically a brief history of the airport, bring you up to where we are today, and then show you the government's, just the highlights of the government's plan forward, and the PLP's vision forward, and also show you what other jurisdictions have done around the world when it comes to developing their airport. So, the first slide that I wanted to do is, basically, it takes you back to 1943. For those of you, my dad was about three years old. So, I know that there are others here that would remember this, the building of Kinley Field. And basically, Kinley Field was started back right after the World War II, with 1941 by the leveling of Longbird Island, several smaller islands, and filling the waterways between them and the St. David's Islands. The field originally had four runways, if you look at it. You have, what, and four runways. You have the main runway, which is the one that runs down the center. Then there is another runway that is now called, officially known as the Finger, which is no longer in use, and then has been blocked by munition bunkers and was built at the harbor end. Then the third runway is now a taxiway. Then, basically, from the '40s to roughly 1970, it roughly remained unchanged. The field was then transferred from the United States Army to the United States Navy and was then known as the U.S. Naval Air Station, until 1995, when the U.S. Navy terminated its 99-year lease and the field was transferred to the Bermuda Government, which now operates the airport as part of the Ministry of Tourism and Transport. Now, when you have a military operation, they are not bound by the same code of regulations or have to have the same equipment as civilian aviation and civilian air standards. So, therefore, what had to be done was that the Bermuda Government, when they took it over in '95, had to sort of catch up with the proverbial April, and you can go to the next slide, please, thank you. Had to catch up with the, at a very quick pace, to bring the airfield up to civilian standards. So, that came at a cost, which involved changing the airfield lighting, erecting fences, and leveling anything over a certain height within a certain distance of the runway, which included the former base commander's residence and the hill that it stood on. Now, you hear out there being thrown out the term "an airport authority." A lot of people, if you want, I would just quickly buy a show of hands, who here already knows what an airport authority actually does? Good, thank you. An airport authority is an independent entity charged with the operation and oversight of an airport or a group of airports. These authorities are often governed by a group of airport commissioners who are appointed to lead the authority by a government official. What that means is that the airport authority is a separate entity from the government. So, it's basically a quango, but it still answers to the government. So, the capital, the overhead, the financing, the expenditures are no longer what some would consider a burden of the government or come off of, or being paid by the taxpayers. The airport authority makes sure that the airport becomes self-sufficient. So, that's where this, and the airport authority is a very crucial part of any, in this case, of any airport development. And I'll show you how airport authorities take either a lead role or a supporting role in different development options and plans. Now, the Progressive Labor Party's vision moving forward is that, basically, the Department of Airport Operations, which is responsible now for overseeing and managerial oversight of the airport, should then be transformed for the purpose of creating an airport authority. This would provide the fundamental framework and infrastructure, which would result in the removal of the expenditures associated with the above-mentioned government department from the government's financial books and placed under that of the quango of the above-mentioned authority. So, and that just basically goes to reiterate what I was just explaining to you earlier, that when you create an airport authority, because as you can see that it's been thrown out that we can't afford, the government cannot afford to build an international airport, which we on the PLP agree with. However, we don't have to give away, sign away our airport in order to be able to be put in a position to afford one. So, moving forward with the Progressive Labor Party's vision is that our current vision allows for the staff at Department of Airport Operations to remain employed. Now, they would not be considered, by the technical term, a government employee. They would be directly employed by the airport authority. The creation of an aviation quango provides the ability for the airport authority to seek independent financing for the much-needed new airport. So, now, what that means, once again, is that the airport authority, being it as a quango, it now has the ability to make real-world or real-time decisions. Aviation industry, for those who are not familiar, is a very fluid industry. It changes on a day-to-day basis. Rules come out. Policies change at a moment's notice. And an airport authority allows the airport to make the decisions in that time. Because currently, right now, the airport manager would have to go to the Transportation Permanent Secretary. Permanent Secretary goes to the minister. The minister then goes to cabinet. Cabinet decides, passes it back down to the permanent secretary. Permanent secretary goes, and sometimes, depending on the situation, the cabinet would have to bring it to Parliament. It then has to go through Parliament. So, all of that lengthy time period is what can stifle or prevent an airport from taking advantage of an opportunity as it arises. But when you have the airport authority, the airport authority is able to make a decision in theoretically real-world time. And the new airport would not only bring Bermuda up to the 21st century, because remember, as you saw, that air terminal that we have now has not changed that much from the picture that you saw in the 1970s and even slightly more than the picture that you saw back from the 1940s. So, we are, and an average air terminal or civil air terminals' useful life is roughly estimated to be 30 to 35 years before it needs major renovations or to be rebuilt from the ground up. So, the new airport would not only bring Bermuda into the 21st century within the aviation industry, and the construction of such would create additional jobs helping strengthen our economy. In the sense of, what happens is that you have the construction of the airport. After that, you have new vendors that are inside the airport. You then have maybe upgraded lighting systems, upgrading nav aids. So, you'll have to have technicians and employ more people. So, therefore, the airport, and if you are aware and you pay close attention to airports and aviation, you'll notice that most big cities, most cities, most communities are built around an airport. Because an airport becomes the lifeline. It becomes almost, it can be, in some cases, the heartbeat of that community, that city, and that country. Now, just go to the next slide. All right. Now, the next slide goes to show you the international airport development projects around the world. Now, what's happened is that this picture here is a picture of Freeport International Airport, Freeport International Airport on Grand Bahamas Island. And the reason that I bring this up is because the, this had, at the time, was a unique situation. This was probably one of the first PPP, public-private partnerships for an airport development in the Caribbean. And this happened approximately 50 years ago with the Hawksbill Agreement. Freeport Bahamas's brief history is named because exactly what it is. It's supposed to be a free port, a duty-free port, to get into Bahamas. So, once again, that meant they built docks, they also built an airport. But what happens is that they had what's called the Hawksbill Agreement. The Hawksbill Agreement is that same agreement that gave a private company the ability to have control of the land, control of the ports, in order to be able to fund the development of an airport. Now, what has happened is that in 2015, the Bohemian Government is supposed to be reclaiming or taking ownership back of that airport. But over the past 50 years, that private entity has been able to grow and expand to the point where now it, one rivals that of the government in the sense of control over the airport. And the government has little to no control or no say over what happens at Freeport International Airport, the Freeport International Airport, to where now the government cannot afford to redevelop the airport, cannot afford to build a new airport on its own. So, now, it is expected and proposed that that airport is going to be resigned or the lease will be extended for another 50 years. So, the Bohemian Government does not get this airport back for another 50 years, which would mean that it would be 100 years before the Bohemian people have a say of what happens at that international airport. Now, we go on to the Cayman Islands. And the Cayman Islands is very unique in the sense, and it hits a little, hits close to home, because the Cayman Islands is basically CCC or the Canadian Commercial Corporations' most recent attempt at developing another airport. Now, the airport in question is the Owen Robert International Airport on Grand Cayman. And last year, CCC put in a bid to develop the airport. And the Cayman Island Government is somewhat, even though they are colony-like we are, they don't have the control over their finances, or as much control over their finances. They still have to get everything approved by the FCO, by the UK Government. But what happened is that the UK Government saw this deal, and they stepped in, and they expressed concerns about one thing, one major thing, and that was the tendering process. The tendering process was sole source, untendered, and did not, was not put out to an open and competitive bidding process. And that, I don't know if anybody else seems to think that that sounds familiar, but this tends to be what has happened in other jurisdictions. I'm just providing you with the facts. Now, the FCO, as I said, the FCO had concerns with Grand Cayman. So, therefore, it would raise a few eyebrows that approximately, this was early 2013 that they put that proposal in. It stands to raise a few eyebrows that just about a year later, CCC brings that same proposal to Bermuda and tries to pass it on to the Bermuda Government. This is a proposal that did not meet the criteria for another colonial or UK-dependent, but yet they feel they can bring, basically, the exact same proposal, just change the name and change the date. So, if the FCO had concerns with the CCC deal in Grand Cayman, why would the Dunkley Administration feel as though they would not have an issue with it here in Bermuda? Now, we're going to, this is going to be most likely my last slide, because I just wanted to go through very briefly. But now, we have another. There are those that would say, "Well, Cayman Islands and CCC is just one example. It's just a one-off deal." Now, if you look at this one, this is a PPP with CCC, public-private partnership with the Canadian Commercial Corporation. And this is their most recent airport development. This is a development which they got exactly what they wanted, the terms that they had put in the contract. And the Ecuadorian government signed a concessionary. Now, concessionary concessions in aviation is the user-friendly, the politically correct term for privatization. All right? So, when you, just because you hear, you don't hear the word privatization does not mean it is not being privatized. They have found a better word, because it's not only in Bermuda where this word privatization is considered by some emotive. Very few countries look kindly on privatization, because they know the effects that can happen. So, the Ecuadorian government signed a concessionary or privatization agreement for 35 years. Now, this means that you have the airport would be, or actually now, because it's been signed, is currently controlled by an entity that is 100% foreign-owned. Now, if we were to go back, and I don't need to, but if we were to go back to Freeport, we know, we have an idea of what's going to come down. In 35 years, you're going to, the Ecuadorian, or CCC will say, "Here you go. Here is your airport back." Oh, the Ecuadorian government say, "Well, we need to replace this. We need to enhance this." It's almost like, I personally just sold my car recently because I had to get my car taken off the road, because it cost $2,400 to fix and maintain and put on the road, but it was only worth $1,500. So, now, this is a situation that we can possibly get ourselves into, or Ecuador can get themselves into at the time of 35 years from now, where they don't have the money to redevelop it, to upgrade it. CCC will say, "Well, we have the money to do it. Why don't you sign for another 35 years?" So, therefore, you've got 70 years where you don't have control over your airport. And it even means now, currently, the Ecuadorian government has little to no say in regards to the airport, which means that they have little to no say in the revenues that are generated from that airport. They have little to no say in who is employed at that airport. They have little to no say, and these are just the facts. I'm not trying to scare anybody. I'm just presenting the facts so that we can make a better informed decision. Because be, do not be eluded, do not be disillusioned that the government is moving forward with this deal very quick, fast, in a hurry. I feel that it is prudent that I can share with you firsthand information that the developers are here on Ireland. I've seen them today with my own eyes, walking around the airport. So, please understand that these are the, this is the technical side. And if I may, just take a little liberty and talk about St. Helena. No, don't, okay. I'll leave St. Helena alone. Might talk about it later on during the debate. But hopefully, this gives you a very good understanding on the technical side. And I will now turn it over to my colleague, Shadow Finance Minister, David Burke.
Before David Burke comes, let me acknowledge our leader, Flight Captain, Mark Bean. Also, we have here our party whip, Loretta Fogo, and Rain Ferbert. And I forgot to, from the start, so accept my apology, the Senate Leader, Brother Ruben, and Senators Renee Meeng and Mark Daniels. Mark Daniels, you probably should stand up, it's your first time down this way. Okay, we want to keep moving, so our Deputy Leader and Co-Pilot, Shadow Finance Minister, David Burke.
Good evening, everybody. I want to, of course, before I begin, welcome everyone here. And I want to thank MP Derek Burgess for inviting us up here to, as he would call, God's Country in the wonderful Hamilton Parish. I'll try to be brief, and I will walk you through the second half of the presentation, because I do believe that the Shadow Minister of Transport, who has 18 years of aviation experience and two degrees in aviation management, kind of knows what he's talking about. And I think you could get that from what he said. But I'd now like to talk about what the OVA plan is for the airport. And as Lawrence said, it is quite plainly and simply to privatize the Bermuda International Airport. And what we will see is that the airport itself will be privatized for a period of 30 to 35 years and will hand over the operational control to a Canadian company. And I think Lawrence covered that, so I don't need to talk to that much before. We just heard about Quito, Ecuador, and the thing which I'll touch on a little bit later, because one of the things that people keep talking about is concessionary agreements, and it's not privatization. So, I'm going to get into some definitions later so we can actually understand fully what a concessionary agreement means. And I think that it's very important that we realize that this is privatization. This is what privatization looks like. This is what privatization is. And as Lawrence had said earlier, the loss of control puts the jobs at risk for the 43 people who are currently employed at the airport. There's no question about that. The person who's paying the money decides who they hire, and that's just the facts. And then finally, I think that what we're looking at is, if we're going to go to the next slide, if we can go to Diallo, because I don't want to talk about what Lawrence already spoke about. Now, I'll go into, as I said, question. What is a concessionary agreement? And the answer is privatization. The OVA, when they made their announcement about the airport, they stated, and I quote, "That the government would enter into a concessionary agreement with the Bermuda Airport Authority." So, that's what's going to happen with CCC. They're going to enter into a concessionary agreement. And I think that's key, because also, when the OVA announced this, they said that we will eventually be able to take possession of our airport. Eventually means down the road, on a 25- or 30-year deal. So, understand, that's what they say. I mean, they can be very cute with words sometimes, but the fact is that we are going to lose control of our airport underneath this structure. This is a structure that has happened. Now, when we hear that, when we're debating in Parliament or we get on the radio, we'll get calls, and people will say, "It's not privatization. It's not privatization." Well, I will read you the definitions. The first one I'll read for you is from the University of Westminster. And it says, "The transfer of operations to a private concessionaire is privatization." It goes on to say, and this is what it looks like. It says, "A private company or consortium has a concession to operate all or some assets for a fixed period, usually 20 to 30 years. And at the end of the concession, in theory, it is handed back to the government." Well, we heard what the "in theory" was before from MP Scott, because what happens is, the government doesn't get the profits. The government is not able to reinvest. They're not able to save. And then, at the end of the period, what more than likely happens is, the private concessionaire is like, "Oh, you may need to have investment in your thing. Let us go ahead and give you some more investment so we can hold the airport for another 30 or 35 years." So, I think that's key, when we say "in theory." That's what it looks like. That's the type of deals, and we've seen that happen in history, as we've seen in Freeport, Bahamas. Another definition is from the Library of Economics and Liberty. And it says, and I quote, "Another major form of privatization is the granting of long-term franchise or concession under which the private sector finances, builds, and operates a major infrastructure project." So, that is what we have. That is what we are looking at. So, if anyone tells you that this is not privatization, you need to tell them, yes, it is. And, okay. And from, I think Lawrence touched on the Canadian Government, but I think also, in that case, it's very, the Cayman Government, I think it's very clear. What we saw in the news today, and I just want to read a quote from what CCC tried to give the Cayman Islands. And it said, "The proposal would have involved the Canadian firm financing, building expansions of the airport and runway in exchange to a 30- to 40-year operating concession and the right to collect aeronautical and non-aeronautical revenues." Now, when we go into revenues, what we're talking about is a lot of money. And right now, the airport itself connects, collects $25.2 million in revenues. And how is that broken down? It's broken down, 10.7 is from the airport directly, and 14.5 million comes from airport departure taxes. So, when you add that up, it's $25.2 million in revenue. The expenses of the airport currently are $20.56 million. So, the revenue right now makes an annual surplus, or the airport right now makes an annual surplus of $4.67 million. However, as we've heard in Parliament, as we've heard from other people, that profit is not enough for CCC in order to build a new airport. So, the government is considering giving additional revenue to CCC in order to finance the airport. And when we're talking about additional revenue, we've heard that one of the things which they're considering is a solar farm at the Finger at the airport, and use that revenue in order to sweeten the pot, to give that revenue to CCC to finance this terminal, or revenue for airspace control. So, given the current income, given the current income, in order to meet the projections of how much the airport would cost to finance a $200 million airport with a 5% interest, the OVA has to find an additional $8 million of revenue to add to the $4.6 million of surplus right now in order to finance the construction. So, when we're talking about the interest of a $200 million project over 30 years, we're looking at payments of $12.5 billion a year. Now, before I go to the next slide, before I get into the numbers, talking about, you know, the billion dollars which I've been speaking of and people have been giving me flack for, I just want to make sure that everyone is clear on this fact. Right now, the airport's taking in $25.2 million. In the future, in order for this deal, they will, the concessionaire will have to get more revenue. And we've seen from the Cayman example that when you, the concessionaire gets control of the revenue. They're the ones who get control of the revenue. They're the ones, and of course, they're a concessionaire, so they're going to want to make the most profit that they can. So, they're going to cut expenses if they can. They're going to look to create, as they call it, efficiencies, which a lot of times means layoffs and reduction in jobs. So, I think, another point, before I go on, because I think it's also very important, because we keep on hearing this thing about there's going to be no expense to the taxpayer. Well, the expense to the taxpayer is right there, the loss of the revenue. And what I've said before, and what I will continue to repeat, it does not matter whether or not we borrow the money and pay the money ourselves, or if the Canadian government borrows the money and we pay the Canadian government, and the Canadian government repays the money. The fact is that the money is still being borrowed. If it's on someone else's balance sheet, or if it's on our balance sheet, our finances are still going to be affected. are still going to be affected, and those, and that's the reality of the situation. If we go to the next slide. Because I want to go into how much money continued. So let's start with the figure that I've been talking about all the time. So we have the total amount of revenue right now, the total amount that CCC stands to collect over this contract will be in an excess of one billion dollars. That is the figure. And how do we get to that? Right now, as you said before, the airport collects twenty-five-point-two million dollars of revenue. We're looking at a thirty-year lease, so thirty times twenty-five-point-two over thirty years is seven-hundred-and-fifty-six million dollars. However, as we know, and the older I get, the more I realize, I tell my wife all the time, I'm like, "I don't like this thing called inflation. Every time I go to the store, every year, things just get more and more expensive." The fact is, that prices do not remain the same. So if I just go with a very conservative figure of two-percent increase in prices over the period in time, so we add two-percent per year to that, so when we have thirty times twenty-five-point-two, plus two-percent inflation, we get a figure of one-point-zero-two-two billion dollars. And that's just with the revenues that the airport currently collects right now. If we were to go ahead and add in an additional six million, now remember, I said additional eight million is needed, but if you build a new terminal, the amount that you spend on maintenance, of course, will be reduced, so you don't have to spend that money on maintenance, and you might build a more energy-efficient terminal, so you'll have less money. So let's just assume that we need to find additional six million dollars of revenue in order to make the payments, and for the surplus, to pay for the hospital, oh, sorry, to pay for the airport. Running low on sleep, I'm getting ready for the arrival of my child in fifteen days, it's work. So, twenty-five-point-two million, plus seven million, now, people are going to laugh at me because I got my figures wrong, that's what happens, but we have thirty-one-point-two million, sorry, because it's six million, so I have a seven there, but it's six million, so twenty-five-point-two, plus six, is thirty-one-point-two million dollars. If we go ahead and we look at a thirty-year lease, and we look at thirty-one-point-two million dollars, with no inflation, we're talking at nine-hundred-and-thirty-six million dollars over a thirty-year period. And when we factor in the two-percent inflation, we are looking at one-and-a-quarter billion dollars, one-point-two-six-five billion dollars. That's the revenue that we will give to this concessionaire. Now, people will say, "Yes, well, the concessionaire is going to hire Bermudas, they're going to pay Bermudas," that's fine, but at the end of the day, those profits will be leaving the country. Those profits will be going to an entity, and say, for instance, we are able to increase our tourism product, say, for instance, we're able to increase arrivals, say, for instance, we're able to do that, the profits do not accrue to us, they accrue to the private company. That is what privatization looks like, that's what privatization is, and that's why it's important that we do not privatize Bermuda International Airport, or as I call it, sorry, the LF Wade International Airport. Now, if I can move on to the next slide, because I think Lawrence touched on this before, and it's the lack of transparency in this deal. It's quite shocking and quite surprising, because when we're talking about over a billion dollars of revenue, why is it that the OVA does not want to make sure that we get the best deal possible? The OVA has refused to adhere to the principles of good governance, and it will not put the project out to tender. We are supposed to trust the Minister of Finance, who said, "This is the best deal that Bermuda can get." Well, it doesn't make sense, and it doesn't pass the spell test. And what is most interesting is, as Lawrence had mentioned, the UK government, in the letter of entrustment, because we are still a colony, and this deal is with a foreign government, because the Canadian Commercial Corporation is a hundred percent owned by the Canadian government. So we have to get permission to engage in a transaction with a foreign government. And the letter of entrustment said, and I quote, "The project for the redevelopment of the airport must meet value-for-money tests in accordance with best practice set out in HM Treasury's Green Book, Her Majesty's Treasury's Green Book." And that's the, I guess, the financial bible that is used in the United Kingdom. Now, when we look at Her Majesty's Treasury's Green Book, it specifies four different procedures to verify value-for-money. An open procedure, a restricted procedure, a competitive dialogue procedure, and a negotiated procedure. Now, out of these four options, the most restricted of these four options, the negotiated procedure, still requires the OVA to receive a minimum of three proposals. So, we have good governance, most people believe that we should put this project out to tender, at least get competing bids, at least go to maybe the United Kingdom, United States, Netherlands, China, India, ask them if they can give us a better deal, maybe we can throw the causeway into it as well, what about the causeway, something that seems to have just been forgotten? But the OVA is saying, "No, this is the best deal." And right now, the OVA is in London, fighting the UK government on the terms of the entrustment. Why? Why are they trying to get out of the tendering process? It does not make sense. Now, I will leave you with this, and this is a quote from the World Bank. It says, and I quote, "The award of concessions and contracts, and hence the process of privatization, is a major source of corruption." I'll move on to the next slide, because I think it's important to talk about what the PLP believes. What we believe in the Progressive Labor Party is, first of all, that we should not privatize the LF Wade International Airport. We also believe that the profits that are generated by a new airport belong to the people of this country, and should not go to a Canadian company. We believe that we can build a new airport and maintain control of an airport, and we cannot forget about the causeway. In this deal, what we are looking at doing is giving away the only asset, or use the only asset that can be leveraged to finance the upgrade of our causeway, and that is something that is very important, that we have to consider. Also, we believe that a project of this size, when we're talking over a billion dollars of revenue that belongs to the people of this country, it must absolutely go out to tender. And that we have to make sure that we get the best deal that takes into account both the causeway and the airport. And if that takes a little extra time, because we've heard the reason why we can't go out to RFP is because it takes too long and it's too expensive, if it takes a little bit of extra time, I do believe that's better than getting a bad deal for thirty years. We have to take into account the long-term view, and not just the short-term view, because short-term thinking can result in long-term consequences for our family and for our children. So if I can just compare, and I can go to the next slide, because it's two different visions. The PLP's vision, let me start with the OVA's plan. They want to select CCC through a sole-source-intended process. They want to privatize our airport for thirty to thirty-five years. They do not consider the rebuilding or upgrading of the causeway, and they see over a billion dollars of future government revenue go to a Canadian company without an open and transparent process. The PLP's vision promotes a competitive, open, and transparent bidding process, provides negotiating power for future causeway and additional air terminal upgrades, because we might need to upgrade it in the future, who knows? And if we have someone else who's in control of it, we have to go back to them and renegotiate the existing contract. It uses the creation of an airport authority as a vehicle to allow Bermudians to take advantage of the future projected revenues, and it also allows us to maintain operational and managerial control of our airport for the near future. Those are the differences. So in conclusion, the One Bermuda Alliance say, said a little while ago, that they were going to put their privatization agenda on hold. We heard public bodies reform was put on hold, we're not going to go there, we're going to negotiate with the unions. And then they turn around and look to privatize one of Bermuda's most valuable assets for a period of thirty years. The OVA refused to examine other options for financing our airport, and will not have a competitive tender process to ensure that Bermuda gets the best deal. The UK government has told Bermuda that they must follow the best practice, but the OVA is now fighting government house, as they want to sole-source CCC and ignore good governance by bypass the tender process. The bottom line, ladies and gentlemen, is that we cannot allow our airport to be privatized, and we certainly must not allow the OVA to go through with this deal without an open, competitive, and transparent tender process.
Now, we want to open the floor to questions, comments, keep it brief, because we have to be out of here by eight-thirty. Yes, we go to sleep early down this way. Cousin Senator Rubain.
I was asked today, the question, did CCC approach the Bermuda government, or did the Bermuda government approach CCC?
Well, thank you for that question, Senator Rubain. What I would say is that, that question was asked in the initial press conference, and the initial press conference said that the government actually approached CCC. And what the Minister of Finance said is that the Minister of Finance has financial advisors, and their financial advisors made him aware of this novel procurement arrangement that was offered by the Canadian government, and they went ahead, and they spoke to the Canadian government, and it was something that met along the lines of what Minister Richards felt was good for it. So that's what happened. So, I mean, and the thing is that, we all know, this is a business transaction, and I think we have to keep on remembering that we hear this thing about, this is of no cost the government of Bermuda, it's not going to be on the Bermuda government's bill. Nothing is free in this world, there is no such thing as a free lunch. So when we keep on hearing this, it's just kind of like, we're not stupid, the Bermudian people aren't stupid, and clearly, there is something that is going to cost us. We've seen what is going to cost us in future revenues, and it doesn't matter, as I said before, how do you finance it, the money will have to be borrowed. The question which we have to ask is, do we have enough confidence in ourselves, do we have enough expertise on this island, to put together a structure that can be bipartisan, that can work and include our international business community, that can make sure that we deliver an airport that is on time, that is on budget? We can even go through an RFP process. When we look at what happened with the hospital, it was a well-regarded international RFP process. And we hear from Minister Bob Richards, "Oh, well, there was a PPP at the airport, so, you know, it's the same thing in the airport, we no more privatize than the hospital." That is not true. The difference is that the concession, there is no concessionaire at the Bermuda Hospital's board, at the hospital. The hospital is run by the Bermuda Hospital's board, which is owned by the Bermuda government. We run our hospital. There is a difference. So, to be completely honest, if we go through a competitive bidding process, and we might end up with a PPP, the key is that Bermudian people should maintain control in operation of our airport, and I think that's the bottom line. So we need to make sure that we go through this process, because we can end up with a deal that sees us retain control of our airport.
I just wanted to piggyback on what the Shadow Finance Minister said, just to put it out there, that the information that I've been given, and the research that I've done has shown that this is not the first time that the Bermuda government has been approached by a foreign entity, mainly a Canadian company, to take over control of either trying to generate revenue for the airport, or trying to take control of the airport. My research shows that back in ninety-eight, it was done by a company named YVR, and it was turned down. Then also, under the PLP administration, you had two major infrastructure projects that needed to be done, the hospital and the airport. The PLP decided that they're going to do one at a time, to make sure that we have quality of a quantity, they focused that the decision was made, the hospital comes first. While the hospital was being built, there was a master plan that was drawn up, which did all the research, it had all the, this is where you hear people talk about consultants, no, it was research being done in developing a master plan for the development of a new airport, to go into effect right after the hospital wrapped up. Now, what has, what transpired is that the financing part, since there were different options out there, that was being researched, and that had yet to be decided on prior to the election.
Brother Stuart.
Evening, everybody. Two questions. One, procurement, wasn't it the PLP that set up a procurement office? And two, has the British government been made totally aware of the circumstance of what's going on? Or has the OVA just put in the, in act for money?
The Office of Project Management and Procurement was set up by the PLP under Premier and Minister of Finance Paul Cox in two thousand and eleven, with the Good Governance Act, so that department does exist. In regards to your second question, as to whether or not the United Kingdom knows what's going on here, I can assure you that they know everything that is going on here. They probably know more than you know about what's going on here.
Thank you.
Yeah, good evening, all. I want to ask a similar question in reference to him, in reference to the UK. I E., we had a, just before Copman, in reference to the UK government.
Stand up, so people can hear you.
Sorry, just before Copman, in reference to the UK government. We had a piece of legislation that went through the House, in reference to property and all that. It was, it was successfully passed by the PLP government, sorry, the PLP as opposition, but the governor refused to deal with it, it marched, as the people be marched on government House, and still today, nothing's transpired from that. I guess my question is, in reference to this deal, like you said, that the OVA government are, at this point, are fighting with the UK government in this, in reference to this particular transition. I guess, one, question number one, what happens if somehow it doesn't get sided? Well, let me refer you, they sided with the OVA government. Question number one, question, and then I want to ask this question. I listened to Minister Bob Richards, he made a statement last week, and I don't know what he writes to you or what. And now I listen to Minister Bob Richards, I get offended.
What's the question?
He asked, he basically said something about the average Bermudian went on the same. And that's, to me, that's an insult, and that's not the first time he's done it, because if you ever listen to this man, Brad, he has a tendency of insulting the US intelligence. He does it all the time. And then, so I have to ask a question. In that same, or probably a few days later on, he said something about ten million dollars in consultancy fees, then about thirty seconds later, he said, he's talking about, "Do we want to go through the RFP process? Do we want to go, people need jobs, electricians need it, steelworkers need jobs, these people need jobs, do we want to spend ten million dollars between friends and all that?" And, when that part between friends, it happened, that's on like corruption.
You want, you want us to comment on it?
Yes, please, that, that ten million dollars between friends.
Well, I can answer a question from the United Kingdom. What the United Kingdom decides is what happens in this country. We are still a colony, and that is the, and that is the reality, that is the reality of what we saw when the governor did not want to form a commission inquiry, after Democratic elected Parliament decided to do so. But I think what's very interesting in this whole situation is, you know, a local media outlet, the role is that on Saturday, referred to a letter of entrustment as a draft letter of entrustment. Just so we're clear, letters of entrustment are drafted. When the United Kingdom says, "This is what it is," this is what it is. So we will see if the government of Bermuda, I guess, is successful in negotiating their letter of entrustment. They have not agreed to the terms and conditions, and maybe they're attempting to negotiate the terms and conditions, but the UK government has stated what they believe should be happening regarding this situation. On the other issue, insofar as amongst friends, I just think that there's a question when it comes to, as I said before, do we want to get it right? Or do we want to be in a situation where we make a bad deal, or we can't find another better, a better deal? Who's to say that we're talking about a two-hundred-million-dollar deal here? Who's to say that we don't go out to an RFP process? That might cost some money, but we end up saving a hundred million dollars over thirty years? Who's to say? And I think that's why it's important. You cannot know if you're not getting the best deal unless you ask other people if they can meet or beat it, that's the simple thing.
Just to piggyback on that, when it comes to the development of an airport, even if they were to sign the deal today, groundbreaking wouldn't happen for another year. So when the minister comes on and says that, "Do you want to wait another year for a job?" That's being economical with the truth, because in any case, you'll have to wait at least another year while the, all the details get worked out. But part of the details is this, is that other jurisdictions, other Caribbean islands have seen a trend, when it comes to CCC and other Canadian companies, they tend to purposely underbid for the contract. where it comes to CCC and other Canadian companies, they tend to purposely underbid for the contract. And what that means is that, and this is where this ten million amongst friends comes in, where they would, there was another St. Vincent, where they were going in and they, Canadians went in and bid a hundred and seventy million for their opening bid, want to skip a few. By the time, and then the bidding process came, it ended up being five hundred million with, with everything that the Canadians would have put in. But the St. Vincent government ended up doing another design, another option, which only cost them two hundred and sixty million. And then after they had some inclined services, it was two hundred and four. So that's almost twice the amount that they would have paid had they not gone through the tendering and open bidding process.
Good evening everyone. We have a couple of questions. The first one that I just thought of is, do we compare this to the building of the new hospital in reference to the new airport coming? My first question in reference to that, I just need some clarification and congratulations to the hospital board, to all their fundraising. But that was a local entity that handled that building and when they're not on the budget, that they have to come up with extra funds over and over. And I've been in my head for this for a while because we have a hospital that we, that paid for hospitals. So I'm just wondering, in, in the airport comparison, is the reason for privatization to eliminate that? Like is it because you hire someone, they, they bid, they say they're going to build it for this amount? And they have to do that. It doesn't come, the funds don't come from extra fundraising, so one is the one. That's the first question. The second is, if that's the case, the figures that Mr. Bart gave in, in the gross of the billion, the twenty-five point two of the revenues and the twenty point was operations, right? So it wouldn't, it's, if it's a private company or the airport authority, where we have to spend that operations money, right? So that money goes to Valco, that money goes to local, it goes to the staff, well, that's Bermuda and foreign. It goes to the food for white pill and bad ass that provides the food at the airport, all those things. The money goes into the country. And so the, the access, which was at the time we put in the eight million, but looking at a bigger airport, more gates, more people, so that means more staff, more people to feed, hopefully more visitors, without the America's car, we have a lot. I would like to see a true figure of what we will be giving that entity, whether it's the airport authority or a private. And if they, if government did put it to tender, which is a great thing, and we've got three prospects, which is what you're calling for. And the three, one came from China and one came from Canada and one came from the UK, and we still picked one. Wouldn't we still be in the same dilemma? Wouldn't we still be privatized and that money will be going to either one even if we put it out to tender? So are we calling for a tender process or a local authority?
Well, thank you very much for your question. And I'll try to answer it in this fashion. The first thing is that in regards to the hospital, the company that built the hospital, or the new acute care wing, was Pageant Health Services. It wasn't public-private partnership. But Pageant Health Services is a, is a consortium of a local company and an overseas financier, the construction company, which I think is Sir Robert McAlpine out of the United Kingdom. So it's, it's, it's a, it's, the funding was put up from overseas for the most part and for Sir Robert McAlpine. And one of the things with a PPP, and when you put it that way, is it so far as it's called a transfer of risk. And they transfer, you know, the budget risk over to the people who are building the property. So what we saw with the building of the property, with the building of the hospital is that there were some problems with the building of the hospital and they ate that risk. The difference is between what we're talking about the airport and what we're talking about at the hospital is, as I said before, Bermuda operates and owns and runs the hospital. There is no foreign entity that is running the hospital. Pageant Health Services is only responsible for the maintenance of that building. They do nothing else inside that building. The difference is when we're looking at the airport from the perspective of what the OBA is looking to engage in, they are looking to engage in, not only are the, does the foreign company own and do the maintenance, but they also have a concession over the aircraft terminal and get all of the revenues from the airport. And that is what CCC does. CCC is an arm of the Canadian government. Their job is to go out and get business for Canadian companies. And the truth is that whether it's one million, whether it's five million, whether it's ten million a year, wherever it ends up being, they are going to make a profit. They are not going into this agreement in some type of thing to say, oh, government of Bermuda, we see you. Here, let us just give this to you. They are going to make a profit. And the profit which they make is profit that cannot be earned by the people of Bermuda. That is money that will not go to people of Bermuda, that is money that will not go to invest in other things. And say, CCC is going to make a profit. When the Bermuda Airport Authority makes a profit, can't that money go to help social programs? Can't that money go to help other things? So I think that's the difference what we're talking about. It is not just, it is not just, it is the operational airport and they will make a profit. And the question is, where do you want that profit to go? Do you want that profit to go overseas or do you want that profit to stay, that profit to stay here in Bermuda, run by an airport authority, which can be trusted and which will do the job, which is run and operated by Bermudas?
Yeah, just to add to one point is that part of the, the reason why we, we as PLP are pushing for an open and competitive tendering process is that not many people are aware of the Department for International Development. That's a department that is under the UK government, whose sole purpose is to fund infrastructure projects. You have a colony named St. Helena, which is what I was talking about a little earlier, who need an airport. And their airport is being funded by the Department for International Development and they do not have to pay the UK government back because that is the job of that department. So an open tender process allows us to look at these different options versus we might be able to qualify for it, we might not, but we will never know if we don't apply, if we don't look.
That's right.
Brother Knight.
Honestly, if we had as far as departure tax, doesn't that go straight to the consolidated fund? The actual airport does not exceed that? Right now?
Um, yeah, that is, that's true. And I, I do, as I-
Yeah, the other, the other thing is, I know the fact that airports have been trying to cheat, if not owe some of that money. But now, it seems like we're just giving away, and I know they have a budget. Each year the budget's been cut. So there always, you know, about that fourteen million dollars, they actually want to have a loss. So the, the actual profit might now seem like we're just giving away that revenue that the company is not getting.
Um, you are actually right on point with that. That has been an, a conversation piece with the airport. And I know there are some people that work for the airport and with aviation in Bermuda. But there is a rule under ICAO, which means that, that says that, I think it's ninety-eight oh two, that says any revenue generated by an airport needs to go back into redevelopment or reinvesting in that airport. So the fact that you are thinking about giving that revenue away to a private entity would make it unlawful. Now, the fact that it is going into the consolidated fund now is somewhat of an issue, but it is one that can be argued. But the gentleman is correct. If you look at the budget book, the Department of Airport Operation is running at a ten million dollar loss. But when you look into the Department of Tax Commission's office and you see fourteen point four million dollars in departure tax, you don't pay to leave the tax commission office, you pay to leave the island and that's leaving for the airport. That revenue should go to the airport itself. Now, if you take that revenue out of the tax commission office, the government, the country has to find some other way to find, to, to get, to generate fourteen million dollars. We don't know how that's going to happen and I would probably ask for more clarification.
Brother Knight, you're playing part two, aren't you? The one, yeah. Just stand up there, everybody knows. We've got four playing pockets in the room. Brother Knight.
You know, I was going to sit there and try and do some simple math, right? And I took this two hundred million dollars and divided it by thirty years. And I think the payment came out to be about, say, six million dollars, that's about interest. Right? Maybe if you add the interest to me, it just seems to me, just about, that the airport, if they get the proper revenues, if they get the taxation, can pay that two hundred million dollars. Make a payment on every other. After eight million dollars or ten million dollars.
Well, as I said in my presentation, if we looking at a two hundred million dollar terminal at a five percent interest rate over thirty years, we're looking at an annual payment of about twelve and a half, I don't remember, it's between twelve and a half and thirteen million dollars in annual payment. Now, the fact of the matter is that that's a lot of money. And that's money that Bermuda doesn't have right now and that's money that the airport doesn't have because the airport's only running a profit at four point six seven. Now, the fact is that whether or not an outside company does it, or whether or not we do it, our revenues, our total financial position will be lessened by how much more it costs to build an airport. And I think that we need to make sure that it's very clear. When we hear, and I, and I keep on hammering this situation, when we hear the fact that this is not going to cost the taxpayers anything on front, if something sounds so good to be true, it probably is. And it will actually end up costing us more. And the reason why is the company that is coming in is not doing out the kindness of their heart. They are going to make a profit and the people who are going to pay for that profit is all the people here, are the taxpayers of this country.
Why do you grow trees?
Just pick, just pick one off, you know, right? Almost every public event I go to, right? I recognize clearly that this country is going to have to raise taxes. I'm, I'm saying it before, I'm going to say it again, you know, and I'm not, I'm not, don't agree with you. Don't shake your head or anything, but I am no secret. I use just simple math tells me that this country, our government is going to have to raise taxes in order to do the things that we need to have done for us to survive. Which simply means that the people that can afford to pay taxes, just going to have to pay.
Let's stick to the, I just want to stick to the issue because we've got to be at about eight thirty. Uh, next, anyone else? In the back, Anthony?
First of all, I want to commend everybody in this whole discussion around airport because a lot of times what happens is people make statements, right, and they accept them for five months on them. And similar to everyone else around here, they accept, I think, one or two. The reality is right now, as you keep on saying, the airport makes a profit of about five million dollars, right? That can early sustain a payment of about seventy-five million dollars. So right now, the airport, which is existing finances, cannot even afford an airport of twenty million. So I'm not even sure who they care from with that starting number. Anybody can run the numbers. If you run it as, for example, five hundred for six, for thirty years, it shows that you cannot finance airport right now with this revenue. And so my question really is from either of yourself or three of you would be, forget the airport for a moment, right? And give any comments about how actual money can be raised by the government and event to support, to support the airport or Bermuda from the airport perspective, you know what I mean? Like from the airline industry sort of thing, because I, I know for sure as a fact, nobody can comprehend this, I suppose, in that right now, the numbers themselves just make no sense and we should learn from that. And again, the reality is, it's not about money, it's about jobs. That even if you take it into the, into the, into the round, this is really about the OBA realizing that they have promised us two thousand jobs and this is one way to get some jobs up and running. So let's put that aside for the minute. And I'll go back to my original question, which is, based upon Bermuda's position and airspace, are there actually other opportunities for the government to generate more money from the valuable土地 airspace?
Um, thank you very much for that question. And allow me to just reflect on, I guess, commentary that happened before the two thousand and twelve election. There was commentary and criticism from the One Bermuda Alliance that you can't create jobs through infrastructure projects, it's irresponsible to create jobs through infrastructure projects. We shouldn't focus on infrastructure projects to create jobs. That's not the way to go. We need to make sure we grow the economy. We need to make sure that the lucid immigration things will increase jobs and we'll do all that type of stuff. Two years later, completely different story. Now we hear from the One Bermuda Alliance, infrastructure is the way to complete jobs and we have to borrow money in order to make sure that we put our people to work. What a difference two years makes. What I will say to the question is, Anthony, is you're right. And that's exactly what I explained in my presentation. I'm not sure if you came late, but I went through, I went through the numbers and I said that the four point six seven would not be enough to support a new airport. The OBA realizes that, everyone realizes that, and we will have to find additional revenue. The additional revenues which the OBA are considering currently are, well, the, the, the additional revenues which can come are number one, increased user fees. Number two, increased rents inside the building. Number three, increase in departure taxes. That's what happens. And the additional revenue streams which they have identified, one has been the creation of a solar farm at the finger at the airport and use the revenue from that. And the other potential source of revenue, which we do not know how much it could potentially be, is the taking control of our airspace, which is currently controlled from the United States, from New York, and taking control of our airspace and generate the revenue from that. Lawrence or the party leader may know the better figures than me because that's not my area of expertise. Although I am a pilot, I would not take any of you flying.
Anyone else? Brother Knight?
One, one thing that some of the airports have done, including, is call what they call it airport improvement. So you have the departure tax as, as it is right now, when you go to the airport, you'll pay fifty-five dollars. Probably raise, pay twenty, I think twenty dollars right now, so fourteen, whatever it is, probably similar to six or seven million dollars. And there are other ways that you can do it, as far as improving the usage rate at the airport, that not just the transport. So put your hands up, and, and of course go after the other revenues there. But let me make it right clear, which definitely I said. These are minimal numbers, six million dollars, seven million dollars. Private has to increase more revenue. And because they're also looking at replacement costs in the future, they have to come somewhere. So six is just a small number compared to what they need to go after. Airport is their expense to run. Airport, the resurfacing, equipment itself, profit in the, in private company will be significant. So then the revenue will come from user will pay at the end of day. They may have a, they may have a fee where tax drivers, and you know, pay when they need their airport tax drivers to pay. So they may have a fee actually you therefore and charge tax driver as the lead years, in many ways it's wheelchair. So those are some ways.
Thank you, Brother Knight. Anyone else at this point?
I need to understand on this issue, this issue. Need anybody? This hundred million, you know, I don't want me to see my face around. I've been in the foundation industry for twenty years. I'm not a broker. So I know what money is, okay? This issue with the airport, I went online to talk about this Canadian construction corporation. It's definitely a wrong name for it. It's Canadian Construction Association or a Canadian construction company. This is a huge, huge. It's very huge. It's like a syndicate spider all over the world. Okay? It's a corner. It's huge. It's not wrong being in the airport. No problem. Cool. How do you get involved each individual? Put your hands up if you're in the house. Anybody in the house? You get your hands? Huh? Let me get you your hands. You get your hands? Put your hands up. Cool. Power asset. This power asset they have right here. In the form of where you can participate.
Don't leave us out of it.
Okay? Everybody in the theater must be in a hand. That is value asset. Collateral asset that we earn personally. And it's a one unit of power that we have. Serious, serious power. That's what I hear. They know we are, we are, we are rich in assets. Use your hands. Use your power, your common sense, to take control of what they can't take control of about us. Okay? All right, when you found her, we don't have the money. Don't look at us. We have the money. We have the collateral. That's collateral power. That gives us power to say, yea or nay, what you going to do with our country? Foreign alien coming here trying to go up our money and they're going to build her and generate and take money out of her. Cool crap. I'm asking stupid.
Question, Brother Knight.
The question is, um, that's ready. um, it's already, this is, this would be under, not a government, a government obligation bond, but the under, a revenue bond because the collection of revenue, okay? An investment, which I just said, people in houses, they have money. That are bonds to be issued out so they can participate to fund this ourselves and bring in the amount of money.
Probably be funded.
Probably be funded? Huh? Come on, think, okay? No, that makes sense because we have the power and the asset in this country.
Okay, um, our deputy leader had fun and shared with you.
Can we, can we participate in, in revenue, as, as it being issued from the point, as there are better?
Well, I would, well, let me answer your question because, and, and I thank you for speaking because you raise, um, excellent points. Let, let me start, let me start by saying this. To answer your first question, no, that's not what's happening. What is happening is we are giving a concessionary agreement to a foreign company. They've already picked the construction company. They've already picked it. Bob Richards, Bob Richards let it slip when he went on the radio and said it's the same company that built the CN Tower. They've already picked the company. So, so when we hear about this thing about it's gonna have to go out to a competitive tender process after and sees, no! They've already picked the company. They know what they're doing. The fact is that if we are looking, and that's why we have to say, we have to have confidence in ourselves, that we can do it in a different manner. And that's why we take the step back. The first thing that we have to say is, no, we are not going to allow our airport to be privatized to a Canadian company. That's where we have to start. Then, when that is, when, when we get there, when we go about the exploring the ways on how we can finance a new airport, those are the type of discussions we need to have. Because it is my view that the government can put equity inside of it, that people can put equity inside of it, that we can have something that we actually own a piece of. That is what we can go to. So I absolutely agree with what you're saying, but the challenge is, before we get to step two, we need to stop step one. And step one is that on December thirty first, there is a go, no-go deadline from the Canadian Commercial Corporation with the government of Bermuda to proceed with this project. That is thirty days away. That is when the decision is going to be made to privatize our airport. And we need to do something to make sure that people understand what is happening and what we must do in order to stop that. And I do believe, I thank, I thank you for, for your comments. But what we have to make sure we focus on is stopping this right now and also making sure that people are aware that there are other ways. That is one of the other ways to finance the airport. The government can borrow the money, the government can put inside equity, we can partner with other countries. But we're in a structure that does not see us lose control of the revenues of our airport because that is what is the key. Yeah, hang on, brother, hang on. We have two other speakers and then I'll call on the, the leader of the party to answer the first question that was asked by Sister Peggy. Scott Millen?
I'm just like, I'm, what I'm not hearing is, uh, what can the people from Bermuda do?
Okay, you came early, but that will be answered by our leader. Uh, that was asked earlier. Thank you, Seo-Yeon. Go ahead, buddy.
And, uh, and my next question, why is, is the, um, why are we just talking about claiming airspace? If you had, if you could have been taking control of it or starting?
Uh, the airspace has been basically an ongoing, an ongoing topic in Bermudian aviation here. There are a lot of moving parts to this, um, and I'm just gonna look around the audience, glance at those that are, uh, subject matter experts in the room here. There are a lot of moving parts to, to the, to taking control of our airspace. Um, right now, just to give a brief synopsis, a plane goes, taxis out on the runway here. Uh, they call up Bermuda Tower, say Bermuda Tower, uh, JetBlue Flight one seven, one seven three two is ready for takeoff. Bermuda Tower picks up a phone, calls New York Aviation, which is in JFK, says, I have a plane here on the runway. Is he cleared to land, is he cleared to take off? Uh, because they control the airspace at ten thousand and higher. So therefore, we have to then negotiate with JFK, um, and the US government and the FAA. And then the FAA has to talk to ICAO. And ICAO has to talk to our certification, our regulatory body here. And then make sure that everything works and then you have other entities that are already doing airspace control. And then revenues that are generated from that have to be, made sure that it goes underneath the regulations. So this has been an ongoing topic for, uh, I don't, I wanna say a, maybe a, a year or two, maybe, maybe, maybe. More than that, so, more than that. Um, so, um, it's, it's been ongoing, I'll put it that way. So it is in the works, we're getting, uh, more traction with it. And to be able to say how much money you're gonna generate, it's a bit early right now. But to understand that is something that we have been working with and have been doing well, right?
But, uh, Mr. Millen, if I can also give an answer, there's one big elephant in the room. And the fact of the matter is that it's the United Kingdom who has to give their permission. Just like it's the United Kingdom has to give us permission when we look at our aircraft registry. Just like it's the United Kingdom has to give us permission with our shipping registry. And there will come a point in time where, I think the One Bermuda Alliance is waking up to it, that the United Kingdom does not have our best interests at heart. They have their best interests at heart. They do not consider what is best for Bermuda, they consider what is best for the United Kingdom. Let, let's pick one more, anyone else? A question, okay, I'll call on our leader, the Honorable Mark Bean.
I was gonna say, explain the essence, I think it's, essence, is it, uh, is it that-
Levine, Levine?
Under the CCC, another, can you explain this essence or non subsidiary, whatever?
Okay, just, uh, just to be brief, just from the party leader. CCC, uh, has a list of companies that they will subcontract to. SNC happens to be number one, number two on that list. Now, SNC have been, um, naughty little boys, um, to say in the corporate world and has put them on the banned, World Bank's banned list for corruption, bribery, money laundering and all other things that are negative, negative adjectives. Um, so what's happened is that they then go in, they'll come in and let's say they signed with Trinidad. CCC is trying with Trinidad and CCC then went and said, Trinidad government, this is who you're going to choose. Trinidad government said, well, we don't know, okay, we'll trust you. Did their due diligence and found out that they were on the World Bank, they were on the World Bank's banned list. They also found out that out of two hundred and sixty companies on the World Bank's banned list, Ca- Canada has a hundred and seventeen of them, a hundred and fifteen of them are considered of SNC. So then Trinidad said, no, sorry, we don't do business this way. Can't, the Canadian government, your company is too corrupt for us to do business. And that's a quote. So that in a nutshell is what's going on. So SNC, um, is the, the, um, the minister of finance says that's not who we're doing business with. Um, the company is AA, is AA Con? AA Con, who are here on the island as we speak, looking at our airport. So when you talk about a no, a go, no-go, uh, decision, December thirty first is the latest date. That doesn't mean they're gonna wait until the deadline. So with that, say, I'll pass it over to the, uh, party leader to let, to let us know what we need to do, what we can do as Bermudas.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming up this evening. I would first ask for you to give a round of applause to our colleagues, the members. As you notice, we are not trying to scare monger. We are just trying to present the facts to the people of the country and call for a step back on the government's, um, side of things so we can get it right. We all, uh, agree that at some point in time, we will need a new airport terminal. Now, what's important is that that terminal should fit within an overall tourism strategy, an overall infrastructure strategy. Um, the infrastructure strategy is something that commenced under former Premier Paula Cox and it continued apparently under the OBA, but it came to a brick wall. And you can see that by the ad hoc decision to redevelop the airport, the vote including the causeway. What's most important though is the fact that in producing a new, new airport, our tourism strategy, our on-island product has to improve tremendously. The best way to finance a new, uh, airport development regardless of what deal is signed is to increase air arrivals, more air arrivals and more departure taxes. And so the airport has to be developed within an overall strategy for the country. And right now it appears as if it's being developed within a vacuum. Yes, we do need jobs over the short term. Um, make no mistake, uh, the America's Cup may bring a stimulus. I just hope that the airport or the America's Cup announcement is not an excuse for the government to then further ignore the concerns of the people of this country. Uh, first and foremost, I doubt very much that we will be able to have a new terminal completed by June two thousand and seventeen. And so over the short term, in order to embrace an influx of tourism visitors, we are going to have to turn our attention to upgrading the existing facility. And so that's gonna require some funding. And so I'm, I'm very grateful for everyone to come up. Um, to be frank, outside of people power and we're seeing the weakness and strengths of people power this year, the only entity that can put a hurdle and stop the OBA in signing an agreement would be United Kingdom, the Foreign and Commonwealth Office. And so because it's a, a period of negotiations between the government and the FCO, we will not comment on it. But we are looking on to ensure that, because it is a conflict. And we can't understand what the conflict is if the latter of the trustmen said, go ahead and enter negotiations. But as was indicated earlier, uh, the fact of the matter is is that when you have assets of privatization, when you have, uh, scenarios, for instance, like CCC and the recruitment progress selecting a corrupt company, then it should raise red flags, a lot of red flags. And if you look at the nations of the world, this is the reason why the World Bank and, and other entities would state that privatization is a source of corruption. If, if you look at the nations of the world, that, that is a major concern. And anytime you see the politicians, I'm gonna be frank. Anytime you see politicians, uh, making irrational decisions and justifying it with, well, a reasoning that has no justification, then you have to question. Now, I'm not casting aspersions, but when you enter into agreements like the OBA is indicating they want to enter into, then it should cause a, a huge, cause a concern for the people of this country. And so going forward, we will be very vigilant and ensure that the people are adequately educated as to the pros and cons. Make no mistake, we feel we need a new airport terminal, but it has to be, uh, part and parcel of a comprehensive strategy to uplift the country as a whole. We do not need to build anything for an event that will last sixty days that we cannot sustainably use after that event is over. Okay, that's something that we all have to consider. I'm not, and this is beyond politics, okay, in, in terms of preparation for the America's Cup. And again, the airport will be used as a little carrot to dangle, to justify this decision. But it's a decision that if it didn't work in Canada, under the UK government, it shouldn't work here. So thank you, everyone, for coming out and I'll take one, one question and then we can conclude.
You didn't answer my question.
Oh, oh, y'all crashing about suicide bomber?
I'll retract.
Okay, good, thanks.
He said, we're on the clock now, right, thirty days? Does the PLP have, have a voice, really have a voice for the people who want to stop this? I nearly swore, this government. Do you understand what I mean? Very often I say that, I hear people say, oh, the opposition, the opposition has no voice. I don't buy that. You are representatives of the people, right, who voted you in office, just like those people who voted the OBA. Now, is there something, can you intercede in this matter on our behalf to the FCO?
We can do what we can. Uh, we have and are, and continue to be in discussions with government house.
But not like it's coming from just a handful of you folks, right? But from the people who genuinely want this matter to be put on hold, stopped.
I, I think government house recognizes that when we pick up the phone or we go to see them, who we represent. Okay, they acknowledge that and, and that's part of the democratic process. Now, we will continue to do what we can to raise awareness and awaken the consciousness of people as to what the One Bermuda Alliance is doing and continues to do. But in the end-
You're just as much in the dark, uh, as we are with regards to that, that government, you know?
Absolutely, and, and, and that, that comes with losing an election.
All right.
Okay? Thank you, everyone.